Okay, welcome everyone. This is the Budget Community Meeting of the Board of Education for March 24th, 2020. Uh, please join me in the Budget Legions, Budget Legion, last time of the United States of America, and two Republican and one Republican under government. With liberty, justice, and full stop. That was actually tougher than I thought. Um, number two, that is a resolution. I'm just gonna read it out and then we will uphold a motion for it. Resolution is as follows: Whereas Executive Order Number 202.1, signed by Governor Andrew Cuomo, on March 12th, 2020, suspended Article 7 of the Public Officers Law through April 11th, 2020, to the extent necessary to permit a public body to meet without permitting the public in-person access to the meeting, and authorize public bodies to hold public meetings remotely by telephone or similar service, provided that the public can view or listen to the meeting, and that the meeting is recorded and later transcribed. And resolve that in accordance with the Executive Order 202.1, public is not permitted to attend this meeting in person, and may view and/or listen to the meeting by joining the Facebook Live, which will be broadcast from the Hop Dog Public School District official Facebook page at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot facebook dot com forward slash HPS Eels, sorry, HPS Eels forward slash. That link is also found on the agenda, which is on our website, which should be hyped up. And being further resolved, that as required by Executive Order Number 202.1, this meeting will be recorded and later transcribed. And being further resolved, that any requirement pursuant to any policy of the Board of Education of the Hop Dog Regional District that contradicts Executive Order 202.1 or this resolution, including public participation during public meetings, is hereby suspended. Do I have a motion to accept the passed resolutions? So, thank you, Mr. Scerito, Mr. Fortmeyer second. Uh, any discussion? Uh, only be heard if you are against. Very good. The resolution passes five zero. Uh, with that, we will, uh, I'll make a motion to retire into executive session for purposes of discussing matters which would impact the public safety and public health, as well as to seek advice from council. Do I have a motion? So, thank you, Mr. Scerito, Mr. Fortmeyer with the second. Discussion? Please state if you oppose. Motion, motion passes five zero. We are in executive session and, uh, we will reconvene the public portion of this meeting, or what is the public portion of this meeting, at eight o'clock PM. Thank you. All right, Don, have you got, uh, please, Steve, please stop. All right, thank you. Is Lori back on? Lori?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. So, part of the resolution, Lori, was to have the, uh, meeting transcribed, so I'll ask that you work with council, getting a court recorder or whatever the system may be, uh, for getting the minutes transcribed to the public. Okay?
Yeah.
Well, also, number five, um, just so you know, the captions will be turned on.
Caption? What? I'm sorry. Closed captions?
Yeah, that, it has a built-in feature to capture the words. Steve has turned on captions, which may help as well, just so you know.
Okay. Uh, five, seeing on the agenda is the, uh, adoption of minutes for the Budget Business Meeting of March 10th, uh, 2020. Steve and Lori, can you mute your microphones, please?
Mute them?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Rob Scerito with the motion, Gary with the second. Is there discussion? Thank you. Uh, I vote yes. Rob Scerito?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mike Buscarino?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Larry? 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 All right, so the one, two, three, four, five, one, one. Uh, Jimmy absent, Mr. Dr. Kraft out of the room. You guys can all hear me, correct?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you.
Steve, sorry, I was expecting to interrupt, but I heard you.
All right, uh, the motion to approve the minutes passes six zero one. Mr. Kylie absent. Seven point two, I'm sorry, are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to have removed? Uh, Larry, press mute on your microphone, please. Seeing, uh, no matters removed. Uh, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda made by Rob Scerito, seconded by Gary. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. I vote yes. Rob Scerito? Rob Scerito?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mike B?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the consent agenda policies. Uh, sixty-seven hundred, second reading, uh, the purchasing policy. Are there any comments from the board concerning second reading of that purchasing policy? Very good. Mr. Tasman, can you just briefly tell us what the, uh, proposed second reading is? What the changes were made and, um, whatever else? Joe? Don, is Joe gone? Don, is Joe gone?
I don't think so.
Uh, we'll come back to that then. Uh, we gotta go back. I forgot to add seven point three C four to the consent agenda, uh, which is the scope contract that we discussed during executive session. Uh, Rob will make the motion. Gary seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. I vote yes. Rob Scerito?
Yes.
Gary? Mike Buscarino?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Um, I don't know how you get that contract to me. I guess, um, you'll let me know, okay? Lindsay? Or whoever?
Yes, I will do that.
All right, thank you. Going back to sixty-seven hundred, the purchasing, uh, policy, second reading. Joe Tasman, could you tell us a little bit about this policy, what it is, what we're doing with it? Joe?
I can't get, I don't know if you can hear me, but Larry, something happened. Shooter screen went black. I'm trying to get on.
We can hear you.
Okay, and you can hear me?
Yes. And now we can. All right, so we're gonna move on. We're gonna punt, um, sixty-seven hundred until our next meeting, second reading then, uh, unless it's an emergency, which I don't think it is, so that, I asked the district clerk to put that policy in second reading back on our agenda for the next, uh, meeting. New business? Do any board members have new business? I'm gonna come back to discussion matters in a second. Okay, no new business from the board. Any new business from administration? Very good. Back up, we're back up to discussion matters. The 2020 census. Dennis?
Uh, just to remind the board that, um, you know, when our, when the smoke clears, we're gonna send communication to all the residents in the district, just to emphasize the importance of everybody participating and being counted.
Okay. Um, I, I would think that this is a really poor time for them to be doing the census, and they gather, everyone's mind is somewhere else. I don't know how that's gonna affect us, if there's a low participation rate, but I don't know how much is in our control and how much isn't.
Okay.
I mean, it is what it is. Uh, anything else on the census?
No.
And COVID-19 is a discussion matter. Dan, can you tell us a little bit, or Don, tell us a little bit about the distance learning that's gonna go into effect next Monday?
Sure. Uh, Dan Zaratajapan?
Of course. So, um, this Thursday, we'll be having another conference day. Of course, it'll be a remote conference day in light of current situation. Uh, teachers are, um, preparing either a Google Classroom. In most cases, in the, in the younger grades, uh, there could be also CSOW. In either case, it'll be a consistent approach across the grade level and buildings. Uh, we sent home today a distance learning plan to parents, which was comprehensive. Uh, we've already received requests back, uh, close to a hundred for, uh, use of a device at home, a Chromebook, so we're monitoring that, uh, that Google form, which is self-populating. We have a process on Thursday for safe pickup that was organized by, uh, Dr. McCarthy. Uh, we've also had a few parents who have asked if we can help them with Wi-Fi, and we have some options there, so we'll be reaching out to them individually. Uh, Mrs. Bilski's on top of, um, things in the PPS department. Um, our approach with, uh, even tonight with Google Meet, so we're trying to tie it into the Google ecosystem, so you could, uh, in the future, in the near future, things like CSEs will be done remotely using similar tools like we're using, uh, tonight. Um, as of right now, we're still waiting on an update from the governor's office, but we're, we planned for five days, you know, our, our plan is five days at a time, so even though the latest guidance was through the first of April from the governor, uh, we're preparing, you know, through Friday, which I believe is the third next week. Uh, and each day, we're, we're having discussions about so many different aspects of this. Uh, we have a daily meeting with administrators remotely to discuss the latest news, and I imagine there'll be other twists and turns and updates as we get guidance from the state.
Okay, so, uh, Don, Don, why would this not be successful?
Uh, you mean, what could get in our way from a successful distance learning operation?
Yes.
So, there's a couple of-
Hang on a second, Larry. Can you mute your microphone until you're ready to speak? Thank you. Go ahead.
So, there's still a lot of variables here at play that, uh, we, we have to work through, so, for instance, um, you know, parents are also at home, uh, so even though, for instance, we're looking to provide devices, it could be, um, that a particular family may have multiple children in the family, and, um, a parent who's working from home now, who has certain times that they're telecommuting, right, so we're trying to be flexible in understanding of parents' needs at home with structuring the week, uh, in, in relation to how students are accessing content, but if there's also, let's say, a bottleneck at home with access to devices, then we're gonna revisit, for instance, the Google Chromebook survey, um, after what I'll call round one, to see if there's other needs that we can, we can help with. Um, so, so yes, like, I, I think there's a bunch of variables here at play. Um, even tonight, as we're having our Google Meet, we're discovering, you know, little hiccups that are outside anybody's control, and we wanna see what those are, respond to them, and then adjust our constructional approach accordingly, as best we can. Also being respectful of the amount of screen time for students at home, what's reasonable, so we had to think about, you know, six to twelve and grade six to twelve and, 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 uh, splitting up, uh, content and department focus to make it reasonable, uh, for, for students and parents, right? And then there's whole other topics related to end-of-year assessments, how are we going to grade? When to, you know, when does, do we blend, uh, marking periods together? All of these items are, some of them, we can't answer tonight. We have to see how things unfold in the next couple of days and, and weeks or so.
So, most of the things you, you named were external, uh, factors, many of which we won't have control over. What about internally? Um, what, what's the biggest obstacle that, uh, you have? What do you, uh, what would not make this be successful? What would blow it up for you?
Um, I think we need to, um, make sure that, uh, our communication is tight as a, as a, uh, organization amongst administrators, teachers, really everybody, because I, I do think that consistency is vital, so, um, that comes from just day-to-day oversight of, of, of this rollout. So, as you can imagine, the first few days next week, um, depending on the level, the department, the discipline, et cetera, um, you know, what does remote instruction look like? Uh, it, it could look a little different for a kindergarten, right, than it does for a student in AP physics, so we, we need to, um, we need to respond through what, what teachers are encountering, feedback from parents and students, and, and then continue to modify. Um, a question that comes, comes up is, uh, are we doing review, or are we starting new material? And I think that fine line, that balance, is, is only gonna be determined as, as time goes on a little bit. Certainly for the first few days, we have to see what those challenges are for all of us and then respond accordingly.
Okay, and, and do you have 100% buy-in from the union and the teachers?
Yes.
So that will not be what sinks or, uh, blows this up for you?
No, in fact, um, the approach and, and the, um, the collaborative approach we've settled on, uh, includes an expectation that, you know, teachers are responsive, um, each day that we are, we are isolated. Um, we, we actually considered a few different options in that regard that maybe teachers would have set. Office hours was one idea, but we came to realize that many teachers respond back to parents, even outside of normal school, uh, and to students outside of the normal school day, so a better approach is, let's just be responsive uh, day in and day out, uh, so that we, we, we don't disrupt, uh, the normal flow of communication.
Do we have any, um, information or any, uh, anything at all concerning whether regions are going to be held?
So, the only guidance we have from New York State thus far has been about the, the three to eight math assessments and science for, for, and grade A alternative assessment and, and the NICE slack. Nothing has been said yet on the regions, uh, officially.
Could just, uh, add to that question.
Yeah.
The Suffolk County superintendents have a conference call tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM with, uh, the interim commissioner from New York State Ed, so there may be more information forthcoming. We'll certainly share it.
Is there, is there a vacuum of, of, uh, authority or guidance up there right now?
Um, you know, we've gotten some guidance, but it hasn't, it hasn't been anything, it hasn't been anything huge or, or, um, anything to move the needle in terms of our decisions, what we've been doing, with the exception of, um, a couple of days ago, getting the notification about the free-to-rate testing.
Yeah. All right, uh, Don, one thing the board had asked was for, um, a roster, lack of a better word, of, of what individual teachers are doing, whether they're using anything different, what they are using, uh, what their plans are. Not completely granular, but, uh, uh, you know, one mile up, uh, view of, of what each teacher is doing. Is that possible to get done this week?
Uh, sure. Yes.
Okay. And what is, I saw on, uh, what you sent, CSOW?
CSOW is a, is a web-based program that's geared towards K-1, 2, uh, and, uh, is, is, um, used in some of the buildings, um, successfully. Parents respond well to it. It's, it's really geared towards that younger audience.
Okay.
And it facilitates the same, uh, sharing of resources, communicating with parents, so our only, uh, direction for teachers in that regard is, if, if, let's say, two first-grade teachers are using it in a building, and there's a third first-grade teacher, there should be consistency so that, uh, parents can, can have that same experience.
Okay. And, um, first of all, I thought your, your, uh, your letter today was very good. Uh, a ton of information in it that, uh, I think people are gonna find confusing, and not any fault of yours, it's just a lot of information to get out. Uh, do we plan on spoon-feeding parents along the way here? Which day it is, which courses, uh, are gonna be coming, what they should do each morning, kind of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we're also working, uh, Dennis, uh, had asked that Central Office quickly begin working on, uh, an FAQ, um, and so that's in the works. Dr. Probst actually started that today. There's, um, there's gonna be follow-up correspondence for, for each of those domains in my letter and, and otherwise for, you know, Mrs. Bilski could write her own multi-page letter, for instance, related to special education. Um, so yes, we understand how, how complicated things are, and as, as easy as we can make this for, for parents at home, that, that's our laser focus.
In, in that regard, I saw, you know, a, a help desk, which I thought is a great idea. Uh, just curious, who's manning that and what type of, uh, issues are, are gonna be directed to that help desk?
Yeah, so, um, it's being manned, so again, it's a, it's a Google form that self-populates. Um, it's manned by the district IT staff. Um, already, questions have come in. We're, we're gonna do our best to remotely support, uh, students and, and parents and teachers. So, we had opened it up to teachers. We, we normally have an in-house help desk system, so we kind of flipped it for teachers, and then we, we decided to make that available to parents and students. I, I have no sense yet, uh, you know, how, how, uh, how quickly that, that queue is gonna fill up, but we'll, we'll just deal with it, uh, because we think it's important for, for us to be successful.
What is the expected turnaround time for a question?
So, we've set up notifications on the Google Sheet that self-populates, so that IT staff gets those notifications as they come in. Um, our goal is, you know, that day, as, as tickets come in, but to be transparent, it, it does depend on what we're experiencing, uh, in terms of requests and, and such.
Do, do parents have the opportunity to get someone live?
Um, we haven't set that up as a live support, um, but I will I guess, that idea.
Yeah, I, I take, you know, keep your ear to the ground, the, the number of requests you're getting in on the, the, the help desk, and if it's an exorbitant amount, maybe we need to, uh, supplement that with live, uh, live help somehow. I, I, you know, this is, uh, this is not my bag, but-
Yeah, I think, I think, um, at first, we're gonna get a bunch, because if we're, if we're gonna provide over a hundred Chromebooks to those in need,
Yeah.
things will come up that they have questions about, and then I'm hoping that once we get over that first wave, that, um, the, the questions that come up are more, uh, user error, you know, getting to know a, a program, that kind of stuff, so, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, um, respond depending on the need.
And, uh, as far as kids, you said you had some people reach out to you as far as Wi-Fi access. Uh, what are you thinking about with that? A network card or, or something else? What, uh, you know, DINGA?
Yeah, so, we've provided hotspots in the past. We, we do have some families currently in the district that have raised their hands in the past and, and we currently use them. Um, recently, uh, some of the cable providers have, have offered a solution during the, the COVID crisis, so, um, we do have an avenue there as well. The, the, um, the number of people who have responded to the current survey, I think reflects the last few individuals who may need that support, so we'll be able, I think we'll be able to help them, uh, without a problem.
And my last question on this, and then we'll open up to board, uh, at large. What are we doing to make sure that kids with special needs, IEPs, five-year-olds are not gonna get lost in this, uh, process? How, how are they getting the supports they normally would get?
Well, you know, now that we're offering services, um, remotely, we have to ensure that students with disabilities have equal access to the same, uh, opportunities. So, general ed teachers are, um, including their special ed colleagues on their Google classrooms, and then the, the expectation would be for differentiated or modified materials to be provided, and depending on the situation, right, like, there are gonna be certain situations that Mrs. Bilski is on top of for services and, uh, that likely will, will only be able to be facilitated, um, somehow synchronously. Uh, so, the truth is, we, we are just making sure with council that we are able to do those things appropriately, um, and so we're figuring that out, but, um, you know, Mrs. Bilski's on top of the latest guidance. Truth, truth is, even today, we had further guidance from, uh, from the federal government, I, I believe it was, so we have an obligation to provide that free appropriate public education to, to all students and to continue, uh, to differentiate and modify for students with special needs.
That's done.
Okay. Uh, one more question for Dan. The updates and the bulletins from Gene's office are coming in fast and furious, uh, which we thank him for, but a lot of that is, is highly technical and dense, uh, material. What are we doing to make sure that we are, uh, in compliance with this rolling, uh,
Uh, so, for the most part, I, I read the, read the memos and then double-check our processes with Gene and Lindsay's office to make sure we're in compliance and attending to everything.
Okay, so we've been in constant contact with your administration on a daily basis. I think Don and Joe will confirm that. Yeah, so, uh, Gene, rare from me, I'm gonna thank you for, uh, sending those out and, you know, ask you to pay special attention, uh, to making sure that we're in compliance. I can't keep up with them, and I don't understand a lot of it. It's not really what I do. Uh, so to the extent you can be active with Dan and administration, making sure that if we're doing anything, it's not in compliance with those guidance that are rolling in, uh, please do, okay?
I can just add, and I said this to Dennis, superintendent, there are other firms and other pieces of information. They're just a barrage of information. We sometimes, and Lindsay chime in, take a day or two to analyze the guide given out by SED and others, and try to give you advice, and not merely regurgitate what has been given by other sources. So, I told Dennis, you know, sometimes it is a 24-hour delay and 48-hour delay. Sometimes that's better, because sometimes the governor's, you know, uh, press conference is not accurately reflected in the executive order, and you have misinformation in between, so. And, and Lindsay actually chiming. You've been on the front lines more than I.
Uh, she doesn't- Lindsay, you chiming?
Sorry, I'm, I'm chiming. I had problems with my microphone. Um, I, I, I don't know what, what more I can add to that, other than, um, we try, our advice tries to be as practical. I know you said it's dense, but, um, we try as best we can to give practical, helpful advice, and we will continue to work with the administration to make sure it's implemented.
Yeah, so I mean, I didn't mean dense as a, uh, as anything other than, you know, it's this complicated stuff, uh, that if you're not a school attorney, some of- complicated stuff that if you're not a school attorney, some of it is hard to get your head around. And I know that your bulletins go to all your clients, right? But what I'm asking is to the extent that there's anything particular to us, and you guys have a decent feel for the way we do things in HopHog. If there's something that comes across as being particularly sensitive or important to our district, I just ask that you guys, you know, keep your heads in it for us because we've got a lot going on and we're really relying on you guys to make sure that we're
Updota. And we're not cookie cutter, you know, we have these templates, but we have customized this. The HopHog scope agreement is unique. We really went through that. Lindsay spent countless hours tailoring that to your needs.
Great, excellent. Okay, I'm going to open it up. Thank you, Gene. I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board on the distance learning. We're going to start with Rob. Any questions or comments? Mr. Squerito?
No, thank you, Dave.
Okay. Gary?
Yeah, I do have a question for Don. Don, given that College Board has now defined a truncated curriculum for the test content for the end of this year, is it our intent to teach to that content or to try to cover the topics that they've left off due to the current situation?
Yeah, so as Gary mentioned, the latest news from AP and IB is out. Just so you know, like, once IB came out with news, then AP came out with further news. So we're trying to keep up with these latest developments. I think we're going to take our cues from our AP teachers. Those discussions are happening on Thursday about our best approach to an online, we want the students to be successful. Obviously, we want to understand what are the expectations for the end of the year in any of these disciplines, any of these courses, and the expected learning outcomes, and then prepare us accordingly. So I think we'll have more to share about that shortly after Thursday.
Okay, good. My concern, Don, is that, you know, we teach to the level that College Board has specified for the test, but then we leave the students kind of short in terms of overall subject knowledge because they cut quite a bit out.
No doubt. Right, the real goal would be to check both boxes, to have them prepared for that exam and of course, for next year and beyond. So more to share.
Thanks, Don.
Yep.
That's all. Mike?
Mr. Buscarino, you on? I'm here. Just, I think there's a lot of questions, I think. At what point during that first week of the distance learning are we going to evaluate it daily and see if there's change that needs to be made? Or you said you're taking it kind of one week at a time, Don?
You know, so we're definitely evaluating it daily. So we have a daily, hour-long, well, many times longer than that, administrative meeting, Google Meet. And certainly in preparation for next week, these meetings are very thorough. So, no, we'll be looking at it every day to find out what are the challenges on the front lines, what's working. We've even established a Twitter hashtag HPS Distance Learning to have teachers share out highlights and accomplishments. But the truth is, we're going to need our teachers most of all. And of course, we'll hear from parents, things aren't going well, but our teachers to share how things are and how we need to adjust as we go.
Is there, I know my kids have a lot of questions about it, pretty much none of which I can really feel comfortable answering. Is there a way or possibility to, I know I even had issues that you helped me through today to set up this meeting?
Yep.
Is there a way to do something like that this week so that we're not digging into what would be, you know, time spent learning to just make sure everything is up and running and in operation this week before we get rolling on Monday?
Yeah, well, the good, yes, the good news is, other than Google Meet, which is one of the Google tools that we really had and utilized to a degree, right, that we're on right now, the Google ecosystem of tools, students and teachers, administrators, we're all familiar with. So the one group that may need to join some new Google classrooms, right, or we established some new classrooms for subjects such as phys ed, art, music, even guidance counselors have Google classrooms. So we're exploring ways to get out those classroom codes to parents along with tutorial videos. We had created a website, which was also in the correspondence. So I would say Google Meet is almost a separate entity. Like, we're going to be approaching that very carefully to make sure that we're using it, you know, appropriately as per legal guidance. But in terms of classroom, Google Docs, Google Forms, like, most students and teachers aren't autopilot with all of that. I think that the biggest challenge as a parent in another district with three kids at home is we tried to capture and present to parents in HopHog a structure for their students to access content that was appropriate, reasonable, and could help with what becomes a challenge at home, which is trying to capture a school day, but not really because you can't capture a traditional school day, but do that in a couple of hours in a way that doesn't overwhelm students as well. So I think that's where our guidance is going to continue to be tweaked or updated as we learn from parents and from teachers.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Stacy?
Yes, I have two questions actually, Don. One is very specific to the letter. First, thank you very much, it was very organized. But the six through 12, I noticed that it was laid out by subject. And my question is, will the teachers be contacting the kid before Monday so they know what time, like it just says English, it doesn't even give any time, but what time they're going to be expected to be there for the classroom? I'm of interest.
Yes, so let me try to explain that piece of it. It's hard to capture it in the letter. Dave, if it's okay, I'm going to share my screen for a moment so I can bring up that portion of the letter.
Yep.
There with me a moment.
So, Don, just...
Can you see my screen?
Just so the transcription makes sense, you're showing the letter that you sent to everyone via email today, correct?
That is correct. So what you see here, Stacy and others, that we tried to capture is not that a student is on day one, on Monday, clicking on Google Classroom at a certain time to experience English class, right? Because that's impossible, understanding that everybody's home schedules are impacted by parents being home, access to places, et cetera. What we've really laid out here is that, whoops, is that in thinking about like two weeks at a time, that students should break up their access to classroom in the following manner. They should think of it day one as, that's when I'm going to log into Classroom for my English teacher, for my social studies teacher, for art or music, for any one of these courses, right, and for PTE and health. For day two, that's when I should think about accessing Classroom for math and science. And the reason there is because in the current construct, we can't, you can't do, you can't take all these courses in one day. So this is really a framework to help parents. It could be something that they even print up and put on their fridge to say, hey, Don, this is, you know, day two, I should expect to see you on your computer today looking at math and science, et cetera. On the teacher's side of that, right, they are going to be posting to Classroom in advance of these days. So going back to an earlier question, this is where we're going to try to find our rhythm. We also don't want to put too much content up there and then run into a problem where, you know, we have go-getters, where a student is trying to get five days' worth of work done in one day. So a teacher is strategic in scheduling their assignments and sharing resources a few days at a time. That may be better than saying, here's the next five days of content. Mike's question, Gary's question, everybody's, what does this look like as we get, as we go flowing? We kind of have to see what's the right algorithm in terms of sharing content and then hearing from parents. We have the best intentions in mind, but we may learn, the teachers are sharing even too much, like we're overwhelmed at home. So I don't know if that will be the case, but we're trying to keep that balance.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question then is, although I know you said that, I know with the whole thing with Google Meet, you know, people are being very cautious about, but I do think it's really important, rather than just posting content and things for the kids to do on Google Classroom, how are the kids supposed to actually learn from the teacher during this time? Will they be live lessons? Will they be posting? Because that's a concern too, especially for kids that won't be able to handle it on their own.
Well, it's good to know that, I mean, you as a board member, as an educator, support that idea. I think we understand that there's really no replacement for synchronous learning. So we've advertised to teachers that they have access to a number of tools to respond to students. Those tools include Google Meet, Google Classroom, you could live chat within Google Classroom by responding to comments real time. Of course, traditional means like email and hopping on the phone. And even back to an earlier question that was from Dave about teacher time, we're even going to be looking to log the number of phone calls and emails that take place for teachers with parents and students so that we have a sense of that personal touch that we're trying to provide with all of this. So, yes, Stacy, I do think that Google Meet, of all the tools, and just to be clear, we're also, we just got approved by Zoom for an education account, so we're going to explore that as well because there's a bit more you can have in a committee such as this one. And they lifted the limits for institutions, they're normally 40 minutes, now they're unlimited. So if we find that that's a better tool and it could provide us some controls so that we just want to be, you know, careful and thoughtful when you're connecting adults and students, we just want to make sure we do it all correctly.
Right. Could I just add one more thing? If it's not, though, will the teachers be either videotaping or doing some kind of, you know, I know you could use ClassDojo to show the actual lesson, even if it's recorded, so that the kids can actually go back and relearn it if they need it, rather than just posting it?
Yeah, I had a man teacher today who was exploring an app which screencasts, captures content, he'll explain everything, he captures it, she can narrate it, and then it can be posted to Google Classroom. So honestly, that's where the good work of teachers with directors to try to get uniform approaches, right? Because each of the disciplines, like math is a great example in particular, you kind of need those supports that may be a little different than a reading passage. You need to, you know, be explained, for it to be explained, how to unpack a problem, multiple ways of doing it. So I think that's all part of our calculus here in terms of the constellation of approaches.
Thank you. Perfect.
Can I follow up with a question?
Yep.
Don, do the teachers have an idea who's accessing and who's not in terms of students?
Yes, certainly they could see who has, who's joined their Google Classroom, and that is certainly an expectation. Those teachers that have been using Google Classroom all year, which is many, many, already have, you know, already know that their kids are in, but for some of the newer classrooms, we have to help that, that's where we may need to help them, make sure parents get the codes, and the parents, particularly K to three, because it's not going to be a six-year-old that's doing this, can log into Classroom, can put in a code. And then there is, I believe, a way to see, I'm sorry, bear with me, I'm just on the fly, spot checking something to see if I can see when people have last been in. I think there's a way to kind of see how active, certainly there's a way to see how active students are if you're posting assignments and asking for feedback, right? That's just monitoring a thread on Classroom, and a student would actually have to add their commentary or submit an assignment, whether to see if they've just logged in to kind of see what's going on. I don't have to check on that, I don't want to give a little news.
Okay, thank you. Can I... Hang on. Rob?
Don, if I may ask a question, we may not know the answer. As a parent, how will grading be now? Will it be pass/fail? Will it be extra letter grade? How will that happen, please?
Yeah, so that is a huge topic right now. We talked about that today on the administrative call for about 45 minutes. It's a topic here in HopHog and every other district. Ideally, like pass/fail is almost the last resort, particularly at the upper grades because we think there could be just implications for students. We may not have no choice at some point, but right now, we haven't made a decision on that. Again, we hope to have some guidance from the state, which could help drive the two discussions. One is about, you know, combined terms potentially, third quarter, fourth quarter at high school, middle school, and what grading looks like. So there could be some disciplines where pass/fail makes some sense, but I'll just report back to the board as that becomes more clear for us as to our best approach. Tomorrow morning, just to share, Assistant Superintendent, Google Meet, actually it's a Zoom call, we're talking about exactly that topic, just to compare notes and figure out what's the best approach.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Larry?
Yeah, hi, Don. I have a couple big concerns. There is no way that I can see the kids getting back to school in two, three, even four weeks. This is going to drag on, in my opinion, a lot longer. So my real concern is instruction. You know, I see that we have these Google Classes setups and these different days set up, and I know this is, you know, with good intent, maybe meant just for a week or two. But, you know, I'll give you an example, mathematics, you know, they're going to post assignments, and I know the teachers will be there for, it says it'll be available remotely to help the kids learn if they don't understand something. So I'm very concerned about instruction going forward, rather than just assignments with feedback from the teachers on kids completing assignments. Can you comment on what, how we're going to enhance this plan if this goes beyond another week or two? And do you have any opinion on what the governor's going to do eventually if we do miss another month or two or three of school with the number of days that kids need instruction this summer might look like?
Yes, I, in a moment, I'm going to have Dennis to pop in, maybe he's more into it with the superintendents about the governor. I agree with you that this is going to go on far longer than the first. I just don't see how that's going to change. I do think that, I touched upon this earlier with Stacy's question, that once we have a clear understanding of, you know, what does the end of year look like? What are we having traditional final exams? Are we going to be onsite? Are there going to be Regis exams? Then we can backwards map it a bit, but you're absolutely right. When it comes to certain disciplines, math in particular, like I brought up, you know, I see with my own kids at home, we're going to need to provide either instructional videos complemented by some sort of real-time support if we're able to figure that out. Otherwise, we're going to be limited in the types of assignments and assessments we can facilitate. So I think that, again, that'll become more clear, hopefully, the next week when the governor has... So I think that, again, that'll become more clear, hopefully, the next week when the governor has guidance. Dan, am I, are you hearing anything from your end on guidance?
No, there's nothing new on that. And like I said earlier, we have that conference call with the commissioner, the interim commissioner tomorrow morning. So I'm really hopeful we'll get some more details. The one thing, Larry, I could tell you is that everybody's in the same boat as us. We're going to keep doing the best we can. And what will happen is, when we are able to return to school, we will meet the students where they are, meaning that everybody is going to have to do some level of regrouping. And hopefully, SED will give some guidance and some support. And, you know, maybe for school, this is just a total guess, but maybe this summer is going to look different than other summers, but I can't really say anything for sure yet.
Okay.
The last correspondence, Larry, that we got from the state was on the 20th. It's been piecemealed out. And when I say the state, I mean State Ed Department. And my understanding is that they have a lot of proposals in front of the governor's office, and that more information's forthcoming. But as we all know, right now, we're looking at the first, right? So that's a week away tomorrow. The common understanding amongst administrators is that there's no way we can get to the end of this week without an update. Right, Dan, would you agree? Like, I can't imagine we go into Monday without an update.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, obviously, the questions are building and the worry is building. I'm happy on our end with the plan that we had to begin on the 30th because it gave our faculty and our administrators a lot of time to really, you know, we weren't in a rush to be first, we just wanted to be the best at this. And I think we're in a good spot. We're certainly as good as anybody else can be. And it's just a matter of making judicious decisions moving forward and responding to the best of our ability as this continues to evolve.
Hey, Don, can I add a question?
Sure.
Are there supports in place for the teachers that maybe are not as savvy with the technology and the implementation of it in the classroom to make sure that even the students that answer to those teachers are getting useful information?
Yeah, so, um, yes. When we met on Friday, the 13th, that was, that was a day that, you may recall, we decided quickly to put together a superintendent's conference day. On that day, we reached out to teachers who we considered, administrators kind of recommended them as their tech stars in their buildings. And we had a quick meeting with them, we asked them to be available to their colleagues. So that was one lifeline. The second was, we created a Google Classroom for teachers. That means, so they're the students in that classroom, right? So they can then see what it's like to be on the students' end of that dynamic. And then we populated that classroom with a ton of resources, tutorial videos. Again, Dr. McCarthy and Mrs. Brophy, who's a teacher in the middle school, have been working tirelessly on those resources. And then, we also then set up, we called it a self-evaluation tool. So at the time, it was like a one-pager that we wrote, "In the event that schools are closed and we need to move to remote learning opportunities for students, we will standardize our approach using Google Tools." And we had a checklist that a teacher can evaluate themselves. And that's what we spent that day, saying that, listen, you're going to need to be able to post work on Google Classroom. That means PDF documents, that means Google Docs, that means hyperlinks, that means videos. And here's a self-assessment to make sure you can do those things. Because if we have to go live with this, then that's going to be the expectation. When I sent an email yesterday to teachers, letting them know about the letter going home this morning to parents, I said, you know, you were prepared on the 13th. And truth be told, when we navigated the district, there were just teachers working in groups throughout the district, getting ready, getting prepared. And so I referenced that yesterday in my email. What we said was a possibility is now our reality, so let's get going. And then the other piece of that, which, the last, I'll call it lifeline, other than, you know, just traditional emails and calls with their directors, principals, me and others, is the help desk that we're making available remotely. And some of that's going to be less technical support, I think, to your question, and more about product use, and we'll help them. We have teachers ready, like Mrs. Brophy, to run webinars, to run remote PDs. And, I'm sorry, there's even one more tool. We have a subscription to a platform called TEQ, T-E-Q, online PD. And they have access to as many videos as they need across a whole host of topics, including Google with just a granular list of videos across all the different Google Tools. So there's a lot there, but the truth is, Mike, when it comes to, you know, one of the reasons we settled on Google is it's very user-friendly. And when you use one Google Tool, that understanding cross-pollinates to other Google Tools. So there's not much of a steep learning curve there.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, any further questions? Anyone? No? Any further comment from administration on distance learning?
I just, I have a comment in general, Dave. Just a lot of thanks to go around, you know, to our administration, to our custodians, to security, to our faculty, to our Board of Education, and even to the community at large. People have been so patient and cooperative and supportive. This has been quite a challenge, dynamics changing quickly, guidance changing by the hour sometimes. So we just appreciate the patience from the community. And I'd like everybody to know that, you know, we believe in students first, best effort and pure intentions. We have spoken with the carriers through this, through this big challenge, we'll come out really strong. But I just want everybody who's listening or watching to know how thankful we are for the support and the team effort. So that's my comments.
Thank you. So, all right, so, um, does anyone, what I'd like to do is schedule a weekly meeting, Board of Education, to supplement the meetings that are already on the calendar. I know a lot of us are going to want to know, want a privacy report on how we're doing with this distance learning. So, Laurie, if you could, uh, let's just notice a public meeting for the Tuesdays between now and the budget vote. Just, we'll do an executive session at 7:30, and then a quick meeting, public meeting at 8 o'clock, even if it's only to approve the minutes from the prior board meeting. I think it's important that we just stay informed and all stay involved, so. Does anyone have a problem with that?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, that's it. We'll do a half-hour exec and then a very quick public agenda on those Tuesdays right now that we don't normally have a meeting. Laurie, you're on still, yeah?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I got it.
All right. I mean, Jean, is that, you guys, you guys will have someone available personally?
Of course, you know, either Lindsay and I or Allison, or some combination will always be available.
Yeah, preferably Lindsay.
I knew the meeting could end without that.
We'll just have to work with Laurie, because to the extent this continues under these circumstances, we'll have to continue with the same notices and that resolution, which, if it continues, we'll probably make it so you don't have to adopt it each time.
All right, that would be, we would suspend the policy until the end of the year.
Right. Currently, it's only good through April 11th, the executive order.
So Lindsay, if you could just work with Laurie on that, I'd appreciate it, Jean. And that's it. Anything further from the board on any issues? Anything further from the administration on any issues? All right, there'll be a motion to adjourn to our next meeting, which will be posted for next Tuesday at 7:30. The motion is made by Mr. Querito, seconded by Mr. Fortmeyer. Any discussion? Bring none of those in favor. I vote yes. Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mike B?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.